To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With the flag of the state of New Mexico and the diesel of the perfect friendship among the county cultures.
Mrs. Carroll, would you please lead us in prayer?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we enter your gates with thanksgiving today and enter your courts with praise. Thank you for your blessings. Praise your holy name. I come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support in this meeting. Fill the commissioners with your wisdom as they make decisions that affect the citizens of Eddie County. We pray for our world and nation. Reclaim this land for your glory. Thank you, Lord God, for sending your son to die for our sins that we may have eternal lives. Lord God, thank you for our military, law enforcement, and first responders. Go before them and prepare the way. Guard, they're going out and they're coming in, Psalm 121:8. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and start with our public comments and announcements. Do we have any public comments?
I have one.
Come on, you're welcome to sit down if you could just stage your main.
My name is Richard Williams. I had forwarded a bunch of handouts and I was actually a procedure of how to do it on the internet. But I also printed it out, so it's a little bit easier for you folks to read. What I'm proposing, it depends on what the commission wants to do, is any county election integrity ordinance. If you folks want to quote this in, and I got criteria, it would be a hand count if required. We in New Mexico, in any county, we don't seem to have that problem. There's other counties in New Mexico that it's questionable. Donna Anna, Taos, Albuquerque, always have problems in counting and doing what they're supposed to do. You might say, why do we need this ordinance? One of the handouts, the third handout that I, that I, in versini, and I'm sorry, I've been in the hospital, so my voice isn't always the way it should be. So much for doctors. So anyway, on the third handout, it's got three cases in which the New Mexico Secretary of State has been sued since 2020. She didn't do what she's supposed to in 2020. She got sued. The public information legal, they sued her because she had dead people on the vote room vote to vote. She had businesses registered to vote, which isn't supposed to happen. She had people over a hundred years of age that have never voted, and yet she didn't clean it up. But she promised to, what she did. So along comes 2022, and she gets sued again in 2023 because she is not obeying the law. She's not following what she's supposed to do. She makes up her own rules. She gets sued again by this think tank and has to pay out $22,000 of our money because she hasn't been, the correct word is transparent. So you wonder, why do you need this ordinance? Because you don't know what she's going to come up with. And this way, you're covering with any county clerk. You're covering yourselves. You've got an extra layer saying, if you sue us, we do have in place an ordinance that we can go ahead and use to, so that it's an honest election. And that's what, that's what I'm here for. So that's basically, oh, there was one other thing. Another handout. Let's say you folks don't want to go for an ordinance. Would you please send-
Mr. Williams, that's your time there.
Would you please go ahead and write to the Secretary of State, asking her to give a sworn statement that the election for primary and general election will follow the rules. Will follow the state, will follow the federal laws, and a sworn statement for her saying she's going to obey the law for a change. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing me to talk.
Do we have any more public comments? Seeing then we'll move into IFB RFP bid awards. The first one we have is RFP 2307 opioid crisis services for Eddie County. Morning, morning.
We went out for RFP 2307 for the opioid crisis services, and it's number 12 of 2023. We began evaluations on January 9th. That evaluation process has taken some time, and we've done some follow-up interviews with both of the submissors. Based on those evaluations and follow-ups, we recommend, staff recommends award to, of RFP 2307 to both vendors, the Carlsbad Anti-Drogen Gang Coalition and Carlsbad Lifehouse, as a multi-source award. And we will start contract negotiations as soon as this official award has been done.
Do we have any questions?
Look for a motion to approve RFP 23-07.
Second.
A motion is second, please call for a vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Next, we have RFP 2404 property management for Eddie County Fairgrounds, for Eddie County.
We went out for RFP 2404 for the property management for the fairgrounds in Artesia. We did receive just the one proposal from the Eddie County Fair Association, and that was deemed to be responsive. Staff recommends award go to Eddie County Fair Association for a year with a possibility of three follow-up.
Any questions? Look for a motion to approve RFP 24-04. I'll make the motion. Second. A motion is second, please call for a vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll move into our trailing agenda. First, we have commission meeting minutes for March 19th, 2024.
Questions, comments? For a motion to approve?
For one.
Second.
Motion is second, please call for a vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Next, we have treasurer's report for February 2024. This is just FY only. It's been distributed, so unless there's any questions, we'll go ahead and move on to revenue report for February 2024. Ms. Brianna?
Good morning. For the revenue report for February 2024, our gross receipts for the month came in at 5.8 million. That's an 8 million year-to-date increase over prior year, about 22% increase from prior year. Oil and gas for the month is 7.4 million. 6.9 related production, based on November production, at 23 million barrels at $77 per barrel. Year-to-date average on price has been around 77 for that. And I guess that's all I have for the revenue report before I keep going.
Questions on revenue report? Motion to approve?
Yes.
Second.
Motion is second, please call for a vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have our budget versus actual for February revenue and expenses.
Our budget for the full year is 260 million for revenue, and for actuals this year so far is at 293. So we are at 113% collected with four months still left in the year. Revenue less transferred is 120% collected. Budgeted expenses is 290 million. Actuals year-to-date is 177 million, 61% spent. Less transfers are sitting around 42%. And just a quick update on general fund revenue is at 132% collected, and general fund expenses are 56% spent without transfers. Any questions?
It's always mind-blowing for a motion to approve the budget versus actuals for February revenue expenses. Motion is second, please call for a vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation by Carlsbad Irrigation District. They're consorting their request for Congress to amend the Title Transfer Act and their request for a letter of support.
Good morning. I'm Lisa Ogden. I'm a member of the Carlsbad Irrigation District Board of Directors. We sent you the information in advance on what our request is, that you support us in our effort to amend the Title Transfer Act of 2000. The reason why we had to have a Title Transfer Act is we had a flood in 1907 that washed out the flume that was made out of wood initially. And so because the farmers, we're a surface water-only district, and because the farmers couldn't afford to pay the cost to replace that flume, we had asked the federal government to help us with those costs. So they asked us to deed over our infrastructure that are collateral against the loan. So they rebuilt the flume, which is existing now in 1906/07, and it's still the structure and the only structure we have that conveys our water from Avalon into the district of 25,055 acres. In that time that the BOR owned the land, you know, we saw that we needed more reservoirs to hold our water. And so Fort Sumner, the Sumner Dam was built in 1936. And in 1939, BOR deemed that it was not just an irrigation dam, but also a flood control dam. And so there were radial gates put in that would be controlling flood only. They have no use for irrigation. So we build Sumner Dam, we owe 68% of that cost. We get it paid off. Then we need to build Santa Rosa Dam in 1977. And then we need to build Brantley Dam in 1986 to take the place of McMillan. So finally, in the year 2000, after we did it everything over in 1907, we finally get all of our loans to the federal government paid off. And they transferred the title of all of our infrastructure, all of our loans back to us. The dams are still owned by the Bureau of Reclamation. We have operation maintenance on those dams. At the time of the Title Transfer Act, they noted that there were major repairs which needed to be done to the radial gates on the Sumner Dam. At the percentage of cost at that time, nowhere in the statute is it said at 68.36%. But that is the amount of money that the Bureau of Reclamation has deemed that we, Carlsbad Irrigation District, now about 500 active farmers, will owe to help pay that 35 million at this point in time estimated cost. For our farmers to pay that amount of money, we'd have to take out a 50-year note. It would increase our costs per acre, per year, to about $36 per acre. So I figured just for the farming that my brother and I do together, we would be paying about $1 million and a half dollars extra over and above all of our normal assessments to CID to repay this cost. CID contends that we should not owe that amount of money. We contend that it is a flood control structure. We are an irrigation district. So the other thing that we had on there was a map, and that is the time of flooding that it takes to get down the Pecos River. So the radial gates are to control the flooding on, on the Pecos River so that Artesia won't be washed out, in essence, is what it gets for. Because they say if there's more than 8,500 CFS that gets to Artesia, it'll flood them out. Well, you can see the map, on the left-hand side of the map, are the number of hours it takes to get from gauge to gauge to gauge. So they're asking 500 farmers in Carlsbad and south to pay 68.36% of the cost for flood control on the Pecos River for DeBaca, Eddie, Chavis Counties, Fort Sumner, Roswell, Dexter, Hagerman, Lake Arthur, and Artesia. It is of no benefit for Carlsbad residents for this flooding that they're asking us to pay for the gates. We have been in contact with all of our congressional representatives. Senator Luhon's office has taken the lead on the Senate side on trying to get this titled, the amendment to the Title Transfer Act. Representative Stansberry's gives her district, and her staff have been helping. But I personally have spoken with people in every congressman and senator's office regarding our effort and our desire to amend the Title Transfer Act that the Bureau of Reclamation would be paying 100% of the cost, not 500 farmers in South Eddie County paying 68% of the cost. So what we're asking is in the letter, please, we're asking that you support our request for the title transfer, to the amendment to the Title Transfer in which the Bureau of Reclamation would have 100% of the cost in replacement of these flood control structures. We don't need those there for our delivery of irrigation water. You know, we do releases to send the water downstream to Brantley. They don't go through the radial gates. They've been used once in 1952. So since 1936, one time have these radial gates been used for flood control. And so, but Bureau of Reclamation deemed that they are category-one structure, and they have to be replaced, and we're on the hook for 68% of that cost. So if, if you, as the county commission, vote to support our effort to amend the Title Transfer, we appreciate that greatly. If you would send letters to our congressional representatives, we appreciate that. But we would also like to have copies of those letters. Mary Barnhart, our CID vice president, and I are going to be going to Washington in June and go talk to each one of the senators and congressmen again to see where we can be. You know, we have language for the Title Transfer written, but we just are needing, they asked, Bureau of Reclamation and the congressional representatives asked us to approach the three counties and the city council for all the different cities and get their support that, for our effort to do this amendment.
Any questions for Ms. Lisa?
I think we should just order.
That's kind of a no-brainer. Cass, what kind of letter do we need?
I think they can help us put together the letter. It'd be nice to see what your amendments are.
I can send you that. It's, it's a very short amendment. It just says that the Bureau of Reclamation will be responsible on the replacement of the radial gates for 100% of the cost and any future maintenance on the radial gates. Part of the problem we had on these radial gates is they opened up Sumner Dam to be a state road. It's a one-lane state road. And so over the years, the salt and all that other stuff was caught in the metal gates. And so, you know, you can't expect gates that were, are that old to last forever. So they have holes in them. We've gone in, we've tried to do repairs on them. It just hasn't worked. Then when they went in to do the design, they found out their initial design would not fit on 1936 concrete. So now they had to go back in and redesign these gates. And we, Mary Barnhart, Colleen Burgess, our manager, Sarah Stevenson, our attorney, and I have been in conversations with Bureau of Reclamation for over almost two years now. And we've given them other options that we think will work, and only their option will work in their minds. So I can, Cass, I can get you that language. I should have stuck it in here. But it's just asking that, that amendment is 30 words, and it goes in on just one page of the Title Transfer.
You have proposed letter for this design?
Um, similar to what we said, if you want, if you want to do that.
I'm approving that we approve and support the amendment that CID is proposing, and that we provide a letter to our congressional delegates' hands. I can't give that letter to the CID.
I'll take that, but I do have a question. What was the impetus of this all coming up, other than the radial gates that they require to be put in? Is it Fort Sumner Lake still, or?
It's Sumner Dam. It's a state park. And so, in their initial decision to, that the radial gates, they didn't even take into consideration that Santa Rosa Dam was on the Pecos and getting a whole lot of floodwater there. And so we, they, they went back and did flood analysis for a million years. So we have a million-year flood they are planning for, but yet we have a structure that's almost 100 years old that they think is going to hold up for a million-year flood. Anyway, they, in the Title Transfer Act, we missed that little phrase, the proverbial, we missed that phrase that we would be on the hook for the replacement of those gates. And they're standing by it, and even though it's a flood control structure. So that's, that's why we're there. We still are contesting that, but we're just 500 farmers, so they're in the federal government, so.
They're trying to put you on the hook for flood control.
Exactly. And so, John, we plan to come to Artesia.
It's more of a just a random question. You're working with our, and you, the motion said congressional delegation. Do we need to add our senators on there as well?
Well, that can, so in the congressional delegation, when you put it like that, it's senators and congressmen. So it's a, it's an all-encompassing.
Are you giving help? Are they being helpful, or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Senator Luhon's act was the one that started pushing this. And they were the ones that called up the Bureau of Reclamation and said, you will start having conversations and meetings with Carlsbad Irrigation District to try and resolve this issue. When I first went on the board about three or four years ago, it's going to be a $4 million project. Three or four years ago, and now we're up to $35 million. And so it is just, and then they still don't have, we're only at 60% design. They still don't know what the real cost is going to be. And we're going to have to figure out where we're going to store our water while they're replacing these because we can't have flooding in there, and we can't have all our water in there. So it's, it's one of your worst nightmares come true for farmers anyway.
It's good to hear that they're being helpful.
Oh, and then when I finally was able to get into Representative Stansberry's office, it took me a while. Her staff has been extremely helpful also. So I, I have not had pushback from any senator or congressman's staff. I have not met with any of them personally, and I'm just a little fish. But I have had very good response from staff.
Still got a motion out there? Motion for a senator vote?
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all your help. Thank you.
Next, we have another presentation by Belinda Lopez. She's the director of Southeast New Mexico Community Action Force in regards to senior citizen program.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me to be your chair and commission. Appreciate it. My name is Belinda Lopez, and I am the director for the senior citizen program of Eddie County. I've been in my position for about 11 years, and we service our seniors in Eddie County for needs with congregant meals, home-delivered meals, transportation, housekeeping, and adopted care services. We do service five counties and around the surrounding areas. And those counties that we do service are Lincoln County, Eddie County, Chavis County, Lee County, and Otero County through Southeast New Mexico Community Action. Here's our mission statement, and what, what we try to do is, we, our main goal is to support our older adults aged 60 years of age, to maintain their independence and to enhance and maintain their health, safety, and dignity. We try to help them remain longer in their homes by providing the home-delivered meals and avoid malnutrition and provide them with resources out there in the community to meet their needs. Here's our profile. We are a nonprofit. We have been in business for almost 59 years. The senior program was established, if I'm correct, in 1967 through Southeast New Mexico Community Action. We do offer, under the umbrella, we do have five other pro, five total programs. I'm not going to go over all of that unless you guys have a question, but we do service the community through Community Action. The population that we serve is 60 years of age and older. And the way that we do this is we do have, where we have to assess the clients. Anybody that is 60 years of age is eligible to come into our congregant meals. They still have to be assessed. It's a one-year assessment. And our home bounds are assessed according to their needs, okay? As far as the home delivered, we do service not only home lunch, but they also get, if they qualify, to get an evening meal, and also weekend lunches and weekend meals. So there's times that a senior may receive up to six meals on day. They are frozen meals. Some of them live alone and cannot, no longer cook. So that's, we do serve, so offer also those addition services. Here is a breakdown of our congregant meals that we serve. This is, includes all of Artesia, Loving, Odas, Melika, Otoka, Hope, and Carlsbad and Artesia areas. These are the services that we have provided year-to-date. Here's our statement of need. We have had a budget shortfall. This is due to, well, I blame it on COVID, but it just never has quit since COVID. We do have where our clients at the adult, I mean, at our congregant meals has increased. We're serving not daily, but close to 100 to 125 people at our congregant setting. Some of these clients, new clients that are coming are 65 to 70 newly-retired clients. So our numbers have hit the low in our congregant setting. So that has caused a high increase in our food. We do have also where we have to implement an extra route in Carlsbad for transportation. Some of our seniors are no longer driving in Eddie County. Either they live alone, they no longer drive, or they're afraid to drive in Eddie County, mainly Carlsbad. So our gas and oil, you know, just, they're just afraid to drive in, in the community. So we've had a big increase in expense as far as our costs in fuel and gas. Some of the challenges that we're facing right now through our program, we are funded through state and federal. I have to apply for that every year. I am working on my budget now. But they don't reimburse you at full cost. What I mean by that is I have to propose so many units that I have to do per year, and then I get reimbursed a percentage of that. We've exceeded our units in home delivered because the need is there. We're always getting phone calls daily from either case managers, home cares, families. You know, so we, right now, we're just trying to do the greatest need. So we can't feed everybody, but we're just trying to assess them a little bit different because we have a never-ending waiting list right now. So we've exceeded our units in the home delivered and our units in transportation because the need is so great here.
And Belinda, you are doing home delivered throughout the county in Loving, Artesia. And Belinda, you are doing home delivered throughout the county in Loving, Artisia, and then Hope, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And I'll, I'll tell you about staffing, I know I'm singing to the choir here because staffing is an issue everywhere. I've had to stop the Hope right now, because I don't have staffing to go to Hope. I'm gonna go back to servicing them once a point a month. That's taking them a hot meal on Wednesday and then giving them four frozen. But right now, I've had to stop it because I don't have a staff, very, very short staff. But we normally do service up to thirteen clients in Hope. And then we service Loving every day, and Otoka, we have several clients that we go to Otoka every day. Odas and Malaga, and I've had to kind of stop Malaga because of the traffic. It's very dangerous for my driver to just try to cross over with all the construction and everything. So we're meeting some of the family, how, if they can meet us, then we'll deliver, continue to deliver in Malaga, but it's just been very challenging to do that right now. We do always look out, I apply for grants, and I'm sure you guys know that we allocation out there in the community are very low. You know, I, I've applied for United Way grants, I apply for Chevron grants. Right now, everybody's salaries are really down. So I'm, I'm struggling right now with trying to get grants. Senior grants are very hard to find. Most of the grants that I apply for, I get turned down because they're based on education. So I'm knocking doors down, trying to find other resources. We do have capital outlay that has been approved for four food trucks through the city of Carlsbad. What those trucks do is, we can go a little bit longer, especially because we're having to service several areas. So Angie and I from the city of Carlsbad are working right now on some pricing through the state so that we can get these trucks on, on the road. This just allows us to go out longer and make sure that our clients get their meals in a safe, that they're warm and they're not, you know, cold or that they get spoiled. So these food trucks are probably gonna help us a lot. And they also give us new equipment through capital outlay for the new Elano Resiners Center, which is here out of Carlsbad. And they also serve as our fiscal agent. The county did serve as our fiscal agent in twenty-fourteen. The seven vehicles that we have right now, they're two thousand and four Dodge vans, that's what we use to deliver meals right now. And so I thank you for that support there. Steve McCroskey has been a big help. Jennifer Amendias has also helped me through the emergency management during COVID, she was amazing. We, we got a lot of supplies for seniors that couldn't get out and that sort of thing, so I do thank the county and the new commissioners for, for that help as well. Here's just the impact that we, that, that I'm facing right now without local support. It's, I just don't have adequate funding right now with my numbers being so high. Serving from seventy-five to a hundred now. Last Tuesday, we served a hundred and forty-nine in our congregate setting. And that's skyrocketing. We were nineties to that. In Artisia, we were serving about sixty-five, seventy, and now we're up to the nineties. So our, our seniors are coming out and eating. A lot of the concerns that they have is, they can't afford to buy groceries, so they're coming to our meal site to eat for three dollars to supplement, you know, their, their food supplies. So we depend on grants, we depend on local governments to help us, and also the state or federal. I've been talking to House Representative Townsend and Catherine Brown, and they're trying to, you know, help me with the legislators to get us some more money, because if our numbers keep going like they are, I don't know what's gonna happen with the program. I'm at retirement age, but I'm gonna do everything in my power to stay here and, and help the seniors, you know, they, they need this program to keep going. But it, it is getting harder to supplement it. Here's unit costs, this is food costs, what I get reimbursed, and what it costs me to do the meal. I don't know why it's reversed on the home delivered, I've been talking to my state people, because home delivery is more expensive now. I have to buy food trays, and every year, Oliver packaging, they're the ones, they're the only ones that, that have those food trays. We have to package them, and I'm paying thirty thousand dollars a year for food, for food trays for the home delivered clients. So why the reimbursement and, and the food cost is lower? It's because of the amount of people that we serve, so this is food costs. And then, of course, transportation has like, excuse me, has also exceeded. We are over six hundred fifty to six hundred and thirty over our budget amount because of, we've had to implement a second route for our transportation clients that are no longer driving, or afraid to drive in the community. So this is just a, just a breakdown of what it costs us pretty net and what we get reimbursed. And just to sum it up, excuse me, uh, we just want to continue to be able to service our seniors and keep the program going, and any support, any suggestions, any help that you guys can help us with. Like I said, I, I depend on United Way, I, I knock doors down, I mean, I, I go wherever I need to, to go, but last year, I got eighty-two thousand dollars from United Way, they have been my biggest supporters. This year for my budget, I got eighteen thousand. So, you know, and they're, they're in line, like I said, allocations in the community are really down. So I appreciate your time, or any help, or any questions that you might have for me that I can answer for you.
No questions.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Felicity.
Thank you.
Let's move to New Mexico Clean and Beautiful Grant Application Request.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Misses. Coming before you today with a request to consider allowing me to apply for a small grant with New Mexico Clean and Beautiful. What I'd like to do with this is try to ramp us up a little bit into a possibly Key Batty County Beautiful Program to supplement what we're trying to currently do with the Southeast New Mexico Illegal Dumping Partnership. Work in conjunction with the Keep Carlsbad Beautiful Program with the help of Councilwoman Harwood. She helped me put some of this together, and she's worked diligently over the years with Keep Carlsbad Beautiful Program. Just wanted to try to ramp this up, see if we can move this forward, help control a little more of the littering, it'll be some education materials, we can sponsor some youth groups with this money, have them do some cleanups, things like that. And then they can use that money to help them, theirselves out with, with events, stuff like that. Hopefully, we'll get some signage out there with this. Like I said, it's a pretty small grant amount I'm asking for this year to apply for, just to see where we can make this thing go, see if we can move it forward. We've also had some feedback through the Illegal Dumping Partnership that industry feels like the, the local governments and entities aren't putting enough into that program. And with this, I'm hoping that we can show them that we are indeed trying to do what we can to help control the littering, illegal dumping, things like that in the community. So I'm, I'm asking to be able to apply for a ten thousand dollar grant, which is fairly small, there's a twenty-five percent match on that that I think we can cover out of my present budget, so there won't be any adjustments needed, I think that I'm aware of.
Did I answer any questions? For a motion to approve New Mexico Clean and Beautiful Application Request.
Second.
A motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Cortez.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Beer.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Next, we have Eddie County Fire Rescue I S O results. Chief Matt.
One of the chairman commissioners? We got a whole bunch of notes, I'm sure you all have a lot of questions, so. First off, we'll start with F P S A, just for everybody's knowledge, that is Fire Protection Service Area. That is any resident, that is structured, business, commercial, residential, within five road miles of a fire station or within one thousand feet of a fire hydrant. The second grading is called F D S, that is Fire Department Supply, that means we one hundred percent bring the water to the scene. Those are any businesses or residences within five road miles of a station, but beyond a thousand feet of a fire hydrant. So in the first grading, we'll go over the F D S, which is the Hall of Water, that's Fire Department Supply. On this one, we received a class five. And we are point one-six points from being a class four. So I have submitted some questions to them, if I feel like they're wrong, I will submit a challenge letter, and then they'll reevaluate and make an adjustment if needed. So this little bracket kind of shows you class ones, twos, threes, fours, fives, six, sevens, eights, eight B, nine, and ten. Obviously, anything beyond five road miles is considered a class ten, just so that everybody knows that if you're beyond five road miles of a fire station, that is where that falls. Here's kind of the point breakdown. Dispatch, we missed point one-five points. We even had probably a two-hour talk, we probably spent more time on this portion than we did anything else. Because those circuits, those are how it, if a portion breaks down or something like that, can we assure communication? So obviously, with the new system that is almost done, we should be able to pick up that point one-five points. Aside from that, call-taking, dispatching, we did get credit for our station alerting, even though we're still in the process of setting it up, having secondary notifications, pagers, radios are able to tell them, things like that. It's just to assure that we're getting the quickest service out to the community. Engine companies, you can see there was six points possible. This is based off total number of engines and equipment on the engines, so what the point oh-one is that we're missing, I, I couldn't figure it out. It's gotta be like a Spanish or something, so. Credit for reserve pumpers, so we got that. The pump capacity, that means that we're capable of handling multiple calls with pump capacity. Our requirement for structures based on needed fire flow average was two engines per fire. So we're able to do that, we, we have sixteen engines that we're credited for. Ladder and service company on this one is a little low, you'll notice it's lower than on the F P S A, this is one of the things I asked a question on. We don't have ladder companies, but we do have service companies, they're like rescues, they carry specialized equipment, things like that. One was on order, so we only got credit for one, and we have one older one that we use as a reserve to get the point four-six points. Deployment analysis, ten is the best, one point six-three, that's just how far away the stations are, how long it would take us to set everything up, whenever we place tankers in the F D S system, we have to set it up, and then we have to run a calculated factor, which they give us thirty-five miles per hour, so we have to figure how far it is, how much water's in the immediate area. Unfortunately, we didn't have a good layout of buildings in our bachelor port, which is commercial buildings, ensure that I S O actually gives the recommendation for, so now we do have that established, so we're able to kind of look at it a little better and work on that. We averaged a need of four tankers per fire to maintain the two hundred and fifty gallons per minute of needed fire flow for up to four hours. So we do have some room for improvement there. Company personnel, this one's gonna be a little lower, and the math problem on this, I can get with you guys one-on-one and kind of explain it to you, but we did get credit for fourteen people, three point three-five on call, that would be admin or volunteer. And then we actually got credit for six automatic aid due to our automatic aid agreements, so. It's kind of a funky figure, I was telling everybody yesterday that we don't even want to get into the conversation of how many people we really need, because it's like New York City, you know, they send a hundred and eighty guys to a first-line construction fire, so. Not something that's ever gonna happen here, so we will never see those fifteen points. Training, we did really good, we got six point nine-five out of nine. We did have some issues utilizing a program to track our training, and it did a thing called bucket dump, so it's what they had told us when we got it, was it was great for I S O, because once you hit all these training hours, it takes and starts putting them in the appropriate bucket, that's not what was happening, they were taking these six hours and putting it here, 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 so. On the fly, the training divisions, they would go in and make modifications, but they did assess eight career staff, multiple levels, and then they assessed two volunteers, and we came out with six point nine-five points, so. We've already put some things into perspective to improve that. Operational considerations, we got all those points, water, because we are bringing our own, based on it having to be spaced out where our stations are, we got fifteen point eight, two point nine-seven, and six point two, for a total of twenty-four point seven-nine, which was about four point seven-nine points more than I had predicted based off of previous evaluation averages. Risk reduction, this was the biggest fight that I had with them, they gave us three point nine-one points, we do a lot of community risk reduction. I feel like they're a really good program. However, it does take other things into account, fire investigation, fire prevention, inspections, and staffing is a big shortage that we had on that portion, so. We're trying to designate a few people to help and make sure that there's more credit there, more training and tracking, tracking, training, things like that, so. Overall, fifty-nine point eight-four points, so, like I said, we're point zero-one-six points away from class four. So I do see that achievable, and I would actually like to see that get pushed up a little bit more, so. Any questions on the F D S portion? And then in the report, you guys can read through, and it breaks it down, every single step that equals up to get the points that we have. Hydrant inspection, we did kind of take a hit on, because we didn't have five years' worth of records. So once we get those full five years, and then the other thing is, we did get credit for a lot of hydrants that are in the municipalities that border the county. So we ended with four hundred and twenty-two hydrants, we definitely don't test and flow those many. And then also White City, we were able to make some arrangements with them where we're actually gonna start testing those hydrants and doing that to pick those up. So we're just better partnership with the municipalities to assure that those hydrant tests are being done. If not, we can have our contractor come in and assure that these ones that border our area are tested. I'm just gonna go down to the final on the F P S A, so the F P S A, like I said, within five miles of a fire hydrant and a thousand feet of a, or five miles of a station, one thousand feet of a fire hydrant. So, again, nine point eight-five on dispatch, everything else is pretty much the same. Okay, so on this one, everything else, pretty much the same, you see an increase on service company credit, three point eight-two. Deployment went up to three point seven-seven, just because we're a little bit closer to those areas. Three point one-three on personnel, training in the same, our water system, we got twenty-five point four-six, the average from previous was about twenty, so five points better there. And we do work well with our water co-op, trying to improve that. The biggest thing I want to point out here is the divergence, so your divergence factor is the difference between the fire department and your water system, so we are actually super close, so like a class one I S O has a super low. So like a class one ISO has a super low divergence, usually lower ISO class will have a bigger divergence, which is a loss of points. So we did good minimizing our point loss. Sixty-seven point nine seven, we are two point zero three points away from a class three. So I do feel it's achievable. Potentially, within the next two years will be when I would recommend doing another evaluation, just because we need those two years of hydrant testing record maintenance, things like that, so. Compared to previous, because it is countywide now, it pretty much averages out to be awash with where we were, but the potential downfall that we were headed towards, definitely being able to at least maintain where we were at is a positive thing, so. But there is room for improvement, working on that, so. Couple of things that I wanted to highlight is, over ten thousand hours of training were documented last year. Apparates and facility placement within the built upon, and any maximizing our five mile radius. Automatic aid, we got the credit for the six people. We were able to get credit for fourteen career people, three point three eight for the on-call on the FPSA, and three point three five on the FDS, plus the six automatic aids. So in theory, that means that we averaged about twenty-four personnel per structure fire to be able to get those numbers. And it was consistent across the board. For this year so far, with the modifications made to training, better tracking process, right now, our career staff's at four thousand five hundred and fifty-nine hours, which means they're on pace for eighteen thousand two hundred and thirty-six hours, and our volunteers are at two hundred and eighty-five point five, and they're on pace for over a hundred hours, so. And we're working, we've made some modifications to make the training more available to the volunteers every single day, versus just having a day a week or every other week. Every day it is available to them, so they can do more to get that compass, get that credit, and keep it up. So any questions, comments, concerns?
I have a question on the risk reduction, is the fire prevention trailer that we have, does that help for that?
Yeah, so, one of the things in this really irritated me was, he said, well, you can't guarantee that you see every single person in your community, so how do you fully guarantee that risk reduction? So, one of the things that Jared's gonna implement is now we're gonna do a report, and we'll actually keep a clicker to track how many people we see, because I guarantee you, we see more than eighty percent of the citizens with all the events we attend, so. Definitely with the trailer is going to help that, because more people are gonna come by, so. Just on the smoke detector program, we've installed around three hundred smoke detectors, I believe, was the total that we've already done with that. So I mean, with that, the fire prevention trailer going in the schools, Loving, we hit every grade as close as we can, so. Another thing is the youth fire center program, we don't have that established yet, we've gotta send somebody to that class to get that. It's not an issue that we have, but it is a program specific that they award points for. So we got some points because we are aware of it, but we don't have a fully implemented program, so.
Those could be potential for?
Yeah, those are.
Gain in the next.
Yeah, these are your bonus points to five point five, so I mean, we do have room, we could essentially get what we need to bump up just right there, so.
Are you trying to achieve a certain ISO rating, or what ideally should we?
Honestly, my expectation was a class five, that's kind of where I was set, we're the very first county to fully consolidate, so. They've called me, I call them, they have a lot of questions for me, they've got a lot of questions for upper management, actually, before we even got our report, the main person at ISO had to consult with the regional manager, who's our former ISO guy, and then our actual ISO person. So it was really an unknown, and I know like San Juan has consolidated, Dungey Anne just submitted their paperwork, Sandoval, Santa Fe is looking at doing it, Taos is in the process of it, so there's gonna be more counties for them to evaluate and see things, and I think they have to look at the model a little different.
I think you said we're the first.
We are the first, yeah.
So I mean, this is greatness for us, right?
Yeah.
You're not totally.
When I say first, Burnley County essentially was true the first long time ago, but they're fully career, we're doing it as a mixed group, so.
What is our, hold on. What is our realistic, do you want?
I think, I think we could be a solid three, I really do, yeah. I think, I think we could be, and when I say solid, we wanna be about, right now, we're sixty-seven point nine seven, so we are a solid four. Like, it would take a lot for us, we gotta lose a lot of points to fall down. If we were like a sixty-one, then I have concern of falling back. So we wanna always shore that up and make sure that we're in the higher range, so that way if we do happen to have a deficiency, or say they go to a truck, it's missing a load of equipment, it's not gonna heavily affect us in the future, so.
What's our target to be?
Like I said, in two years, I'd like to be there. Of course, you know, once you get this, you're back because you've missed by the two point oh three, and. So I mean, I've called hard with them and asked questions, and like the personnel factor, that, that number is based off total number of engines, which we have sixteen stations, so we have sixteen engines. ISO wants you to, per an FPA standard, to have P five people per engine, every rescue company should have six people. So I mean, it's not a realistic goal, that's why I say like that is an unachievable thing to do, but every person that we add, train, those little things, they start to make a difference. So if we can maximize our training points, which is just giving everybody the minimum requirements that they need, right there is a little over two points, community risk reduction is about another one and a half points available, so. I think we could have it within the next two years. We could push it and do it in a year, but we take a risk of just.
Falling off.
Yeah, being right where we're at, or just a little bit above, and just a hair short, so I'd rather take the year, get all the positions implemented, fully, fully, good, solid, hard data, reassess how we have trucks placed, because we had made some arrangements to move a bigger tanker to Queen, because they said, hey, you know, you're gonna have to do this as its own individual, and they said, hey, how many people live up here that are on the department, he says, yeah, but those trucks basically are all up there, and we got zero credit for them, so.
I think that we probably would call it amazing, just for this period of time, I think.
Yeah. And a lot of the other counties have called, asked questions. I know Johnny goes around the state, tells everybody, call me, so anybody in ISO is calling saying, hey, how do you figure this, how do you do this, where would you put this, where would you put that? So we're kind of getting the play with other areas helping them out, to see what benefits them and what could benefit us, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's very hard to be the first one.
Yeah.
You know, to do it, and to go up, you know, I think this is like your prep test or whatever, you know, getting ready to like take the boards or whatever, so this is a really good result.
Yeah.
So good job.
Do you have?
Better luck next time.
Thank you for your work.
You're welcome, thank you guys, we appreciate some support, the guys, the guys were more down than I was, but I was happy, because I set my goal at five, and they wanted to two, so.
And then real.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move into our resolution and agreement consent agenda.
Do we have any items that need to be pulled for further discussion?
What about for me?
Look for a motion to approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda as presented.
So good.
A motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Corrova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank you. We don't have any trial number requests, no emergency business, I don't have any legislative comments. Unfortunately, I was unable to make the legislative update last week, I heard it went really well, there was a good turnout. We'll move into elected official department comments and announcements. Good morning.
Good morning, Jeff.
I just wanted to kind of touch, based on a couple of meetings that have taken place with the. So on March twenty-second, I met with the city, Mayor Lopez, and ten nonprofit organizations. We met to identify what each organization had to offer, and it was really an interesting meeting to see that there are so many resources out there, but what the plan is, is to have all of those resources put into kind of one type of pamphlet or handout that we can have readily available to give to either those victims that are part of a house fire, or anything that might come up, excuse me. So Mayor Lopez's assistant is working on putting all of those resources together and making that flyer available. And then on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, we met with myself, James Lackey, and Chief Mack and Chief Arms with the fire departments. I had asked Mr. Lackey to meet with us in regards to the outage that we had over the weekend, and to kind of give us a little bit more knowledge on what, what took place, how it went about, and you know, how they, how they determined who gets shut off, who doesn't, and so forth. It was a really interesting meeting, actually, so. And, and what we couldn't figure out is that there was outages in all, a whole bunch of different areas of the city, and, and in the county, and some, some in Loving even, so we couldn't quite figure that one out. But he was able to tell us that it was something new that they've started doing in regards to what had happened in Texas, that they're trying to avoid, we had high winds, you know, predicted for the weekend, and so they're trying to avoid that happening in our area, which is great. We did ask if he could have better communication with us, as far as, you know, when it's gonna happen, how, about how long it's gonna last, and as well as notifying the public, and he, his response to that was that XL does notify those that are going to be out of power. They have a automated system that calls the resident, or calls the customer, and lets them know, you know, this is gonna, it will begin at this time, and, and as far as his notification coming directly from his corporate office, or you know, the higher ups, there wasn't a whole lot of notice even to give. So, he did agree that he would, you know, work better with us and try to, to notify us as ahead of time as possible. We actually did also discuss using the RAIN system, and we offered that up to him, you know, to be able to help them get the word out to the customers, so that's, that's another good thing that will come of RAIN. And it, it was decided that through the chiefs, we would kind of take the same protocol. Mr. Lackey will contact me, OEM, our office, and let us know, you know, what's gonna happen, and then I'll send that message out to all the chiefs, and to the sheriff's department, and the sheriff. One of the things that I found interesting out of the meeting is that when you go to your doctor's office, and you end up getting put on oxygen, or a CPAP, or any type of medical condition that you might have, that would be affected by an outage, you can ask for a doctor's note, or a doctor's letter, and submit that to XL, and then they will in turn keep a list of those people, and make sure that those people are not cut off, and when there's, you know, outages like this, when there's something that, of this magnitude that's gonna be affecting customers. So, other than that, I don't think, I mean, Josh could kind of fill in some of the blanks if I missed anything, but. Any questions?
I find it interesting that he said that, you know, you should be informed on something, like getting a statement from your doctor on CPAP delay, you just keep that, myself, I would never been informed on that. So that's, that's an interesting point that maybe needs to be communicated, because then you say that the doctors and stuff.
Yep.
Is totally incorrect. I've never been informed of that, and I had one for ten years, probably, so.
Yeah, that was, that was news to me as well, and I think that they need to probably publicize that a little bit better. That is available to people that are on those type of, you know, machines, or oxygen, or anything like that, that, that you can do that, because I was unaware of it.
I have a lot of constituents in my district that were affected by this in the Otis area, and going towards Loving, and I don't know a single one of them that got a call from XL telling them that there was gonna be an outage. And also, what I have found out from some of them that have complained to me is that once they did call in to XL, and got a representative of XL, the response that they got was their loss is gonna be a lot less than the lawsuits that XL would face. What kind of response to that? I mean, people are gonna be put in a position like this, need to be shown a little more respect than get some answer off the cuff like that, that's just.
Yes, sir, I agree. We did discuss that as well, you know, if there's gonna be an outage for, you know, six to eight hours, possibly holding or opening a shelter of some sort, you know, if it's cold outside, or if it's, there's extreme heat, you know, maybe we can open a shelter to allow people to come, you know, cool off, or whatever that may be.
Well, even after the winds have subsided out there, thirty hours, some of them to thirty hours were without power. That is ridiculous. You know, I understand the one switch, whenever, if you're gonna throw the switch because of high winds, why can't, when they subside, why can't you throw the switch and turn the power back on?
And we did ask that question as well, and what we were told is that they have to actually go out to each line that is connected to that, that was shut off, they put eyes on it, and then to make sure that there's no issues with turning it back on. So that takes a lot of time.
That seems a bit unrealistic.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, how was it, how did you?
There was a lot of people, and that's why I asked for the meeting, because Josh had, you know, mentioned that he had spoken to you, but we received quite a few calls asking what was going on, why, you know, why they weren't having communication, and how long it was gonna be shut off, and so forth, so.
What I'd like to do again is provide us with a step-by-step emergency plan policy that, of how they're gonna handle this in the future. If they're gonna, I understand if something blows down, or if something gets hit, struck by lightning, or something like that, that's a whole different ballgame, but when they're gonna throw the switch, there needs to be a policy that we have in hand, that we know the steps that they're gonna take, and when they're gonna decide, and how they're gonna decide to put the power back on.
And he has agreed.
I think that's a fair deal for our citizens in this community.
Yes, sir, I agree. He has agreed to work with us, and, you know, we've always had a good relationship with Mr. Lackey locally. He's been really good about communicating, again, this was a new thing for him. So it, it's kind of one of those things that he, he realized that he should have been in communication with us after the fact, right, but moving forward, he did agree to let us know as soon as he gets it done. We'll make sure that you guys are in the loop as well.
Do they have a supplement set up that shows winds are this, wind levels reach fifty miles an hour, seventy miles an hour, whatever the threshold is? Do they know, is there like a threshold for the, the wind, how extreme the wind is, and as to where they can shut off? Like, why was it Otis that was shut off? I must've talked to a lot of the same people at Commissioner Carlson did, because I received a lot of the same complaints and same responses.
We also asked that question, how the determination was made, who was gonna be shut off, and who wasn't going to be shut off, and he was a little, he, he didn't go into detail about that, I don't know if it was, you know, his restrictions on what he could talk about and what he couldn't talk about, so that wasn't completely answered.
They just said they want to be kind of very well.
And I think they realize that, well, he realizes that, whether they realize that or not, and how it affected our rural area, you know, coming from whoever gave him the, the notice to do this in our area. But I think he sees the issues here, and, and we'll work with him to try to resolve those, but.
Well, I think that one of the things that we see is the answerability to entry to, to the DRC, when it's an appointed, rather than an elected board, has a big effect on how companies react. companies react.
And I, and I understand too, when you go through something like this, I mean, you aren't gonna plan for everything that's going to happen, but thirty hours for one day of wind is very expective, you know, I mean, so.
Especially here, it's windy.
Yeah.
I like it's unusual.
Right.
It's a beautiful day yesterday.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yesterday was a terrible day, but no, nothing at all, so.
We appreciate you.
Yeah, I appreciate you.
My comments were not.
No, I, I understand.
It was just frustration over how things were handled. You know, I'm not so worried about profits of XL Energy as I am about the service that they provide to the community as a whole. And when they put our citizens in a position like they did with this cutoff on a voluntary basis that they did because of the profits of their company, it kind of ticks you off.
I agree. Yes, sir. So if there's anything that I can, um, help answer or if you wanna send me emails that you want, you know, him or I can give you his contact information, he was happy to share that with us as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Park?
I would like to make a couple of comments about, um, some of the, a couple of things that Mr. Williams talked about in the public comment section. Um, as far as hand tallying votes, you know, there's just a way that you're gonna get results on election night, it's just not gonna happen. Um, in the general, twenty twenty-two, we had our absentee board come in the day after the election and hand tally the ballots that we had from all the different polling sites. Um, I think that we had almost three hundred hand tallied ballots and it took them, um, almost five hours just to hand tally those. Now, if you consider in twenty twenty, we had over twenty thousand ballots that were voted, if all of those were hand tallied, how long is it gonna take? And I mean, plus you have, um, human error, you know? We, we do the audits after, um, every major election now to verify what the tabulated results are. We haven't had any kind of discrepancy on any of the ones that we've had in the seventeen years that I've been here. Um, and as far as, uh, people that are possibly deceased that are registered, registered vote, I mean, we, we try everything that we can. Um, we, we search the obituaries, the, the funeral homes, local funeral homes and stuff. Uh, we can't just make somebody removable in our, in our voter rolls. We have to have some proof that they moved to another state or that they are in fact deceased. Um, it would be nice if we had access to the social security index, so that way we can verify if someone is actually deceased or not. Um, now, we don't have anybody that is supposedly deceased that's voting, that's for sure, you know? So I just kind of wanted to touch on these two subjects. And it's very important for, for people to, um, update their voter information if they move, you know? Just because they had, um, filed a change of address with post office, that doesn't come to our office. You have to actually fill out another registration card, either online or in our office. And if anybody has any questions about our future or anything, our doors are always open. And I encourage people that question the election process toward the election.
Eric, we think you do a great job.
But we know you do a great job.
Thank you.
And. Hand, hand tallying is, um, there's a lot of opportunity for human error there.
Yeah.
The reaction is to a lot of places that don't do a great job. They've got no others, where else to go, so they come here.
Right, yeah. I can't comment on Secretary State's office and what they do.
It, it, it's fun to talk about and fun to, to, uh, play off all the national news, but what we have here is, is not that, so continue to do what you're entitled.
We all, we also appreciate you guys having, supporting us. You know, there is some county clerks in our state that doesn't have the support of their commissioners and I really am very appreciative of their support and give us.
Thank you.
Any other elected official department comment?
Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, sorry. So, a couple of things, I'll just follow up on Jen. So on the doctor note thing, they did say that the person needs to call in and they have to fax the note, so I don't know where to find a fax machine these days, I fear they can scan it and mail it, but.
The doctor's office that's to fax it in?
No, the, the person, so like, you're on CPAP, you would get a note from your doctor stating that you're on it, send it to XL, they're supposed to flag your house. So that's where we came up with the rave and all that, emergency and all that stuff, so just working with them, um, will hopefully help curb that. Um, the other item that I wanted to hit on was our awards banquet was Saturday, it was our first one that we've done since we've consolidated. Went great, we had good turnout. Uh, we wanna thank Delon and the Carlsbad Foundation for making it possible we were able to get a grant to help us pay for that, so, um, kudos to them for helping us out, letting us recognize the guys. Um, we did, I did give out thirty-one cheap commendation awards, um, for multiple different acts of going above and beyond by the members of, um, both volunteer and career. A lot of calls were highlighted. Um, one caught my attention specifically that I wasn't aware of. We had a structured fire in Artesia last week and I know the crew was there super quick, I haven't got to follow up yet on how long it was for them to get there, but from arrival, putting the engine in park, dismounting the apparatus, pulling the hose and putting water on the fire, was sixty seconds. So they were able to stop it from extending from the garage, it kind of got into the home, they were able to mitigate it. We prior to it, another one up in Artesia where it was a large shop and they were able to barely get a little bit of burn scar on the side of the residence, which was a pretty hot fire, so. They're doing good work out there. We also had a guest speaker, Lieutenant Robert Arieta from Albuquerque Fire and Rescue. He came in and did about an hour on mental health, great, great program. He's supposed to share it with us, as I'll share it to you, it was actually really good information. Uh, I think my wife is over there hitting checkboxes on problems that she probably sees with me. So just things that we all don't see and basically he was encouraging the fire service to, you know, don't, don't worry about a diagnosis, just know, know your problems, be able to address it, that way we're still providing a high level of care. So it was a good, uh, program. It was kind of a joke that he was the Debbie Downer, 'cause everybody was all excited and it was sad to see that and we went back and, so. Um, overall, they're all doing great work, guys, so they come in, so we will finally consolidate down to one state fire phone, payment angle, the, um, the apparatus are doing good. We actually have, Jared and I are headed to Ohio today to do the final inspection on the two-day ambulances, so that will give us a good fleet of ambulances. Um, there was a call the other morning where Carlsbad didn't have a paramedic, we, we did, we were able to put him on the ambulance and transport the lady, give her adequate care or within the hospital, so. Things are starting to come together, the teams are working better together. We did get our, uh, medical director down here, so our, uh, clinical practice stuff is now in to give us a higher level of care to match Carlsbad, Artesia, and now we're working on getting all the paramedics and the other EMTs together, getting our guys used to their ambulances that I'm used to ours, so that way no matter what the patient's in, we can all just kind of look around and work as one unit to provide a better level of care, so. We appreciate y'all and your support, send any questions.
We appreciate you, Josh, you did a great job.
Appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Any others?
County manager comments, um, I'll make mine short, I don't have a lot. I just wanted to encourage everyone to go back to the brighter future websites, um, the link is on our county website. There was some updated information on that, um, as we discussed, we're gonna continue the website, even though the campaign itself isn't gonna last registrative. The website, the website's still out there and it's been updated with some really good information, so go check that out. Um, again, I just wanna encourage everyone, just like Jennifer had mentioned, um, please sign up for the rave notifications, um, you can sign up for them, Eddie, you know, county wide, um, just through the city of Carlsbad or just through the city of Artesia. Um, and you also have options to check all the notifications or just notifications you would like to see. You can even go a step further and register for the Smart nine-one-one where you can put as much information as you want or as little information as you want, um, to have for, um, EMTs if they would ever come to your house. So I just encourage everyone to get out there. We have the information here at the county, I know the city has it, um, Jenna's working on getting a lot of the, um, information out to other entities, you know, public libraries, senior centers, places where people can pick them up and, and register, so. Um, and then lastly, I just wanted to introduce our new IPRRA administrative coordinators that we've hired, um, Ms. Dora DeGroot, um, is one of them, and Ms. Laura Schwartz. They just started last week, so we're really excited to have them on board. And that's all I have. And a little bit to county commissioner comments.
It's pretty obvious through all the reports we're getting, this county still operates pretty good. We're using our resources well. Uh, one thing I'd like to give a few to, is Director Lopez. She is getting an awful lot of guns and weapons and resources and if there's something somehow we might do to give her help in hand, I would certainly be thankful for that, so. That's it. That's it all.
Commissioner Beard?
I'll keep mine short. I appreciate everything, just, just as Commissioner Beard said, everything that's going on. I think we're, we're making great progress. Um, I apologize for not being able to make it to the, to the fire banquet, but it looks like you have an amazing job and glad to hear all that, so. Lots of great things happening, which should be exciting. I would continue to talk about and I'm going to continue to talk about, everyone will listen, um, we cannot be afraid to vote and anytime we bring these things up, I think, you know, and I, 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 correct me if I'm wrong, but I think he did acknowledge that Eddie County does do a great job. Eddie County does an absolutely amazing job. I cannot be more proud to be from this county, um, on, on how we vote and I wanna be careful the way we talk about it, because the meantime we, we act like there might be something wrong with our voting, it makes people not go to vote. And, and we're seeing that across the nation, but we're especially seeing that in Mexico, that, uh, our voting numbers are, are down pretty drastically. And that's very disappointing to me, uh, because I think our system is absolutely incredible when it's used right and, and we go and vote and, and make sure that we use our, our rights as citizens to vote, um, for whom we think should represent us. I don't always agree with whom is representing us, um, but that's okay, that, that's, that's the beauty of our system, is we don't have to necessarily love who voted for us, as long as somebody voted. Um, I think what we're seeing more often than not is folks just saying, well, my vote's not gonna count anyways, or the system's gonna change it, or the, and that's just not true, it's just not, not in this, not in this county. I would even say not in this state when we're talking about, and all these things. Um, I do think there's some other things we could put in up as a state, not as Eddie County. We don't have drop offices, other counties do have drop offices, I think those are, those are some areas, um, there's quite a few things that I've had, you gotta give them a look, is that not wrong?
Not yet, but we're statutory required, they're, they're coming.
See, that's what I'm afraid of, I think those are types of deals that we could look at, um, but I do think there's surely things we can hopefully put in place, um, what thing, sort of game?
They'll be right there, right there, so.
So, but.
Be, be proud of this.
Yeah, I think there's quite a few things that, that we need to do to make sure that our, our system continues to, uh, be safe in this county and in this state, um, and that's all I can say, I just, just go vote, um, it's important, don't be deterred, don't be distracted and don't, don't buy into the, your vote doesn't count, counts, um, go get it done, so. Um, that's it.
Again, I just wanna bring up the fact that we appreciate everything that Jennifer and Josh and Jason and everybody that met at the XL have expressed, uh, our concerns in the ending, I think that's, I think it, in the end, I hope, um, but we have to stay on top of that. I mean, we have monopoly whenever a, uh, company come in, they're the sole, sole source of our electricity and they have a monopoly, they also have a shared duty to the community itself to act on the best, in best behalf of, of the citizens of Eddie County and I'd like to see, uh, XL do a little better job than they did yesterday. And, uh, I agree with what John said, uh, everybody needs to get out and vote, I mean, it's, it's our one chance to make a difference and you never know when that one vote does make a difference. And so I would encourage everybody, we run a great election, uh, process here in Eddie County and so nobody should be worried about their vote being miscounted or not counted. And so I think that, uh, that speaks well of the people that we have in place, I get from, so.
I agree, um, especially when we were here on Friday for our special election, um, to hear that you're calling people, you're, you know, all the extra work that you're doing, you know, when you get something that's mailed back to you or whatnot, that's a lot of work and it's a lot of time. And I think that the, our constituents need to be a little bit more aware of what goes into making sure that our election runs smooth. Um, I also want to agree with Commissioner Beard on, um, Director Lopez, you know, this is such an important program, uh, for our county, obviously. Um, I've utilized this for my patients for years and years and years and I just like, it's our duty to help, um, our senior citizens, so, um, we can discuss a little bit further about what we can do to help your program. Um, other than that, again, I said, I think Josh and the fire department's doing a great job, um, love to see that Eddie County is still kind of setting the bar on, um, these important areas and, uh, just wanna thank all of our employees in the county in general for all the hard work that they're doing, so, thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer, for having those conversations with XL, that was something that I received a lot of phone calls about and I would still like to have some further discussion with them, just to, to identify what they, how they determine what areas are gonna shut off and what. So if we could figure out how to do that, that would be awesome, so we can relay that information to the people, because nobody that I spoke to was notified. Dora and Laura, welcome. Glad to have you here. Much needed positions, so thank you for being here. And then to echo everybody else, and I've said this way too many times, it's becoming a broken record here, but our clerk's office does an excellent job, we're second to none when it comes to election integrity and, uh, people that complain or that, and, and Mr. Williams kind of sparked all this, he wasn't complaining, I don't think. So I don't want to make it sound like I'm saying he's complaining, but you do hear a lot of complaints and riots that kind of come from the penal gallery. Nobody has taken the time to come and see what has actually done their best. Karen's been very transparent with allowing people to come and see the machines get certified, allowing, offering people to kind of work the, the polls, work the elections, but nobody likes to do those things, they just like to talk about it. Um, if anybody was to actually see behind the, the veil, I think nobody would have these concerns that they do, at least in our part world. So I really do appreciate John being here and continuing to support that and say that to anybody that said otherwise. That's pretty much all I got today.
That's all we have.
That's it.